Can we go ahead and start?
Dave, you have an ETA?
She said she was stuck in traffic. I guess as long as we're not voting on anybody, we've waited for people before, so I didn't know that we would do the same thing.
We're not voting on anything tonight.
Right, I mean, we're just, we've waited on people before, I just didn't know if that was important now or not. So if you feel comfortable, go ahead, go ahead.
First on the agenda, we've come to a Oakwood Drive easement issue for... In order for us to get started with those bids to be placed in the current county news or paper and advertised, we need to discuss tonight if we are wanting to purchase some easement. We'll have to go in the executive session for the cost for that and talk about that separately.
So then our next meeting?
Our next meeting, we'll be bringing that, we'll probably have to go in an executive session and discuss that, and then come out and have a vote in order to even, to get started. That's as far as we are right now with Oakwood.
We're close.
We're close.
We're close.
Very close.
That's good.
Any comments on that?
Kate, did I hear, I'm sorry, did I hear you say, once we get that done, with the competitive bids, then we'll know what to put in the budget?
No.
Perfect.
Ethics ordinance, we didn't have an ethics ordinance. And we'll take a closer look at that, of the people that's on the board, some, it's outdated. Some of them served a couple of years, I know Park Stumbo was on one before, Ron Wilhoy, and some others in town. And we'll take a look at that and possibly get a new board together. And I think it's good work to work with people on that because it would help the city in different ways. Any questions on that?
You talking about is it chapter twenty-six ethics code in the city ordinance?
Yes.
Does that include code condo?
Yes, it does.
Cool. Is that meeting, are you saying that meeting is needing to be updated, or?
It does, well, I think the ordinance is all that bad, it's just the board members, it's outdated, you know, that they're all expired. So we need to get a board together and start implementing this.
What exactly does that do?
It just gives them the ability to hear out anything, any misconducts, anything that might pertain to something unethical. And that puts the decision in their hands of whether they deem it unethical or non-unethical. And I believe that it's, it would be good practice to have that implemented. Anything else? Veterans banners, hit just a little snag there. We got something from Duke Stadium that we was on when they called to get permission to hang those banners. And maybe I shouldn't even call, but we want to do things the right way. There is a... Reservation of rights for the city of Kryton that was talked about before. And it gives the city rights, a franchise that, to put those things up. We do have to still have in writing the ability for that, to put those banners up to the veterans. And...
Would that go for Christmas decorations too, and flags?
Now, Christmas decorate, my understanding, and I might have to ask you JD, there's twenty-two poles, it's not Duke Energy?
No, those poles has got electric drop on them. Back about fifteen years ago, maybe longer than that, we bought them lit up lights that you hang on poles that you plug into there. Now, the flags and the decoration I put up now, I can put those up as long as I don't put screws in the poles. And if you ever notice those banners and those things, they're banked on instead of their nails. Because you used to take the impact, I screw them, it was about a three-inch toggle bolt, that way to hold them tight when the wind hit them. Well, I got busted one day with doing that, they said you can't put them in there, because what that does, causes a conduit or currency maybe through that pole might come through there. If it got electric and hit the light or something, it would short that out. So instead of that, I had the bands, where I put the bands around there to where they're easy to put on, and you know where they're flopping, you can always tighten down, every year I put them back up, I tighten them back down. So every year I re-tighten those bands around, it keeps them up there, they always no problem with that. Now, the other poles that we put the lights on, we had to call, we hired Clemons Electric to drop the electric tube with a hundred bucks a light. And I had twenty-two lights I put up at one time. They lasted one year and they were just another crap. They shorted out, and they guaranteed not to, but the time we got to this, cut and got this out, well, they were gone, or whatever, you couldn't get a hold of them. So I bought the lights, the tree, tried to relight it, re-line the lights. They look like a jigsaw puzzle, about four pieces, because you go up, you gotta go down with the light, today because you had to come across and double light, and that's how I do all that. So the lights up there now are the electric pole that dropped the twenty-two, and then it was cost twenty-two hundred dollars to light up. I think I'm saying it right, that's what it was back then. We paid that much money to have the currency dropping down to them lights.
So the outlets are still there?
Yeah, and Duke charges so much for hooking up on them. So they got to turn them on, they already killed, they can turn them back on. But I think Megan's got a copy of what it used to cost to turn them on a month. For about two years, run one month anyway, so... But they're not doing best on account of the cost of them, and I can't get them high enough to where the kid can't grab them, or the traffic don't hit them. So I'm all in, biking my trucks, all I'm at, that's all as far as I can reach.
The way Duke explains, we passed a, I should make copies for you guys, but we passed that joint use engineering price, somewhere around five hundred dollars was what it would cost in order to make them happy. Also, they're talking about putting these, they want to put up eleven-foot. We have nothing other than back of JD's truck to even come close, how, what is it, six-foot JD, as long as you?
Well, it could be probably five, half, half six foot you're talking, this dude I get, the very top ones I can't reach. I'm gonna read that call, truck.
We may have to rent like a bucket truck, or something to hang us. You guys can have that copy, we want you to put that number here. If you all want to see this, Joe, if you'd like, it's about Duke and...
For Christmas this year?
I don't think we have. This is for the banners, because if we can get this going, but it's, we don't have any Christmas lights, we just have banners, don't we?
They were gone one year, never a history.
I love them, but, you know. It's up to everybody else.
So is that five hundred included in his, in what he's charging for the banner? Or is that an extra five hundred the city has to pay?
The city would put the five hundred up to get this engineer out here to do that scope of work. Okay. This might be something we need to vote on Tuesday night. We'll have to vote up to see if we want to do that resolution with Duke.
So all the other cities that put up things on poles, are they being held, are they doing it illegally?
He advised nobody else, Driver, just Driver Ridge he used, for instance, did not ask, and he appreciated that we even called. And I said, well, maybe, you know, maybe I shouldn't have called. And he said, no. And also asking, you know, are they gonna, are you looking into other cities that didn't call? And he said, well, some of them are on electric poles and some of them are Duke. If they have somebody to investigate, that's up to them. I want us to do the right thing, because if something happens, it comes back, the city won't be liable for. I think it's worth, it's worth the money to do what they're asking us to do in order for that not to come back, and homeless lately. What's going on?
This is for the poles for the banner. So we don't know exactly how much it's gonna be per pole? Or do we need to figure out how many banners we're gonna have first?
The permits is one to forty poles, right here at the top, it's a hundred twenty dollars. And then on down from there, the pre-attachment engineer fee, work order fee, structural analysis, post-attachment, construction, and post-inspection fee. So all those fees listed are what they're advising that they're gonna charge to make sure that it's done the right way.
And that's five hundred bucks?
Well, I says off the top of my head.
So once this is done for this year, then next year we'll be good to go?
Five to six hundred dollars, it looks like to me, just off the top of my head.
For one-time, one-time ordeal, or is this every year?
Yes, I sent him the information that it would be a three-year, they would be up there for three years. And I have the resolution for Joe Montgomery and Operation Honor, it's just, I hadn't signed it yet because I need to wait to get you guys to approve that amount to take care of that.
Well, just that work order engineering fee at a hundred and sixty-five per pole?
Right, oh, isn't it per pole?
A lot of these are per pole.
Well, it says at the top, one to forty poles.
Well, that's for permit coordination fee. And then everything else goes per pole. Now, I don't think we'll have forty banners, but if we did, that's gonna come over five hundred.
Well, the twenty-two, okay, I have a... There are some poles that are not right in the city that belong to Duke. And can we put the banners on that pole, on those?
Every pole through town is Duke's pole, I'm aware of. All these lights through town are belong to Duke, nothing, Owen County here, Owen County on outskirts of Oakwood Drive, that's on electric across that street there and on down that way.
How many poles are on that section of town?
Of, that are on electric Duke.
On electric?
Oh, I don't know, but it's all on that left-hand side. Since you pass Oakwood Drive, everything back up to the red light, this way is all Duke. All them lights hanging over and everything, and I got stuff on that, on the Duke poles. You can get this through a Duke pole and a on-electric pole.
Well, I mean...
I can't believe they can't wait to have to do the chief.
I've asked him, I said, you know, this is a veterans banner, can you work with me? And he said, no. Would you guys, I mean, would you think that would be a bad idea to put it down on the on-electric poles on that side of town?
Are you gonna call and ask for permission?
I'd like to come to myself, Danny, but yeah, I was blown away, you know, by just the charges. When you see other cities have done the same thing.
Yeah, but they didn't ask permission.
Owen County has?
So are we in violation with the flags on there then?
We have a franchise.
Because I put the bands around the poles, that other, that anchor minute, I put the bands around there.
So if we use the bands for these veterans thing? Like the flags?
So to answer your, any answer your question, of course, I haven't reviewed the entire thing, but it appears to me that it's issue of liability, right? They don't want people fixing things or poles without making sure that Brockman's reasons from a safety standpoint. So anything attached to the poles?
Well, I'll never put a dark cell sign on a pole again.
So, I mean, I don't think that whether you nail it in or patch it, I mean, the issue is, they just don't want people stuff on their poles without inspect. And that's to come to their liability.
So if you notice the ones in Driver Ridge, they're bandied on too. So ain't a matter of fact that their band is not banned up there, it's like if they're on a pole. And I guess they charge some kind of fee, which wherever they charge, they charge. And these right here, they've never asked to charge up for these banners or these flags I put up. But the ones in Driver Ridge, they got the bands around them too, so they're all bandied on everybody.
And I think Williams Town has their own electric service right there, so... I'm sure that's probably how they got by with that. Owen County probably has Owen County Electric, RACC over there. I don't know of any other cities that have the banners than those three.
Did you talk to the mayors of the other cities about it?
No. Of course not?
So what's next?
Well, the fact is, of course not means, they told me that they didn't have permission. Why should I have talked to the other mayors?
Well, I didn't know if they knew a secret way to do it or not.
Well, Williams Town has their own electric, that's why I didn't call Rick Skinner. I didn't call Greg Brockman because he said some of their poles was on electric. There was no need for me to call the other mayors.
As much as I like the idea of putting the banners up, the cost sounds prohibitive, if given in fact, as a per-pole cost. Maybe there's an alternate way of displaying them, as opposed to putting them on the poles. Grand County Park or something. I don't know, but based on what Alex is saying, is we're now, I'm interpreting here, now that we're on the radar screen, and that was the right thing to do, it seems to me like we've got increased liability if we don't do anything. And having that inspection seems like the appropriate and thorough way to do things. Or maybe pursue a different way of displaying them, where we don't have that risk or cost. I don't know what that means, though.
After the gentleman with Duke talked to me about that, I was gonna call, actually, Driver Ridge, but he said, I said, well, how can they get by with that, are you going to inspect them, or are they getting a citation? And he said, well, some of the poles are on electric. And that's, you know, I was gonna call Amy, their clerk, and see if they had to do the same thing, but that... This is what we have here, I didn't see the need, Jennifer, to call. Any comments on this? I guess we'll vote, take a look at these, we'll get a copy for our council on this, take a look at it, I will call him back and...
Yeah, if we could find out an exact cost per pole for, per banner. If we get a price tag on set in stone, so we don't know how many banners we're gonna have.
Directly, all we know is about five people, that are five to seven people.
If we can get a price per pole, what they're wanting to charge, and then that would, if we get a number, if we see a number, that would make it easier for me to vote.
And I just don't understand why they're allowing us to put up flags, and we can't put up veterans' banners, you know, or...
Well, you know what, those banners are a flag, we'll make sure we have a flag on it. Put a flag on a banner, we'll talk to the guy with the poles of honor.
Okay, moving on, looked into a blade for the city truck, for just a touch up with snow removal during the day, in the winter time. It's around fifty-one hundred dollars for the blade JD, and the controls on the inside, did that include the... Was that the salt box also?
No, no salt box, it's just a blade and the control.
And that is a state bid and that. The only, the only issue I would have on a blade for the city truck is, I had talked to several people, the blades, the salt, they do tear up trucks pretty quickly. So, you know, I had a gentleman that was knowledgeable in that, said in two years, he'll be buying another city truck, but that's up to council, whether you guys want to go ahead and we will discuss that, if we want the blade for the truck, if we not want the blade for the truck.
Was that on, is that, is that the owner, is that his job description?
No.
Okay. We have no idea how much the salt box, the salt box would be?
No, we just looked into the blade right now.
When you put, when you put a blade on a truck, the front suspension will wear out. You put the salt box on the back and get rubbed out the back of the truck.
That's what I was told.
So... Not really a big win unless you want to get a truck every three years.
I think the county does a good job, I just was wanting to, you know, see what the council wanted to do, something like this.
Wait a minute, the county doesn't even do the harvesters. The streets are never cleaned in the harvesters. They wait for it to melt off. I mean, no offense, but I think a blade would be great.
Now, should we expect the county to go into Harvester and let an area they don't do?
That's part of the city, yes, they're supposed to do that.
All city streets. All city, they even supposed to do the parking lot here.
JD, you rode around with the gentleman last week and showed him everywhere to go to. You guys think about it?
Are they supposed to do Harvester? Are they supposed to?
Yeah, all the city streets, they do everything.
Even the city parking lot right here, all city streets. But look at how many guys they have, look at how many streets that they have to do in the whole county, and you have no idea what time we're gonna get done.
How is the current city truck doing that?
That's three-quarter ton too JD, right?
Yep.
Do you guys want to think about that and then come back to it next week?
Well...
Well, how long would it take to get one?
What's that?
Say we wanted to get a blade, and we said...
This guy dropped it off at Fort Wright and ain't put it on in a week. But if you get a snowbar, a blade for the salt, you're gonna get a pile of salt and a bop kit loaded with it. Because you can't load it by bag by bag and try to do these city trips with a hopper, no way.
Would you drive down to where they stored the salt, or would that be all the way down to Williams Town where they stored the salt? See, like Fort Wright didn't store the salt themselves, they just went down to the State Farm and picked it up. They got a contract for it, right?
Well, I don't know about that, that's who does the, it's that, oh, what do you think, the place that puts them on down there? They put them on, yeah, Crescent Spring, Hartburg, one of those, they got the state bid on this one, so... The start of the hopper box, I'm telling you, that might cost more than the blade does, I'll tell you.
If you get one, I think they are, they're expensive, but then you gotta see, like JD says, you'd get a better deal buying it from Driver Ridge, or wherever Driver Ridge and Grand County buy their salt from, because they buy it on large quantities. So then the city would go to where that's at, load it up, and go do their stuff. So they're not buying a bag hoe, or a bop hat, or anything like that.
I think the county does an exceptional job. We don't have to worry about salt, or, you know, replacing blades, or trucks, or anything else, and you're talking overtime and power, things like that. I think, you know, I really appreciate the county, what they did with that contract.
Areas other than harvesters, they have plenty of stuff here.
I'd say my neighborhood, we, they do a fine job.
They do all the, too.
They don't come through the harvesters.
They will.
So maybe that's the action item is, turn up, get harvested, so.
They got one man, one truck parked, and he hits it, and he goes out of the county, when he gets done, he gets off, and he heads out of here. He might do this first, second, or last, I don't know, I don't know, he does it, but he, but he comes in, if he's on this way, he'll get... After y'all's way first, he'll hit, pin it up, and he'll come on this way, but... Rest of the streets, you know, he gets a straight shot, most of these times, behind Jennifer and his house, goes straight up Harland, Sawyer's, that's that way, then go around the cul-de-sac and go back out.
Give us a chance, hold on, we'll try to...
You got it.
Talk with him, I think, the new guy, JD spoke with him wherever he's supposed to go, so I think that it might be our best case. If we would jump back up to see, now that everyone's here, any additions or nuisance ordinance, on the nuisance ordinance.
I've got a couple of questions, and not any additions, but questions, Alex, mainly for you. I was just thinking about this, one is the Code Enforcement Board, and I was reading, unfortunately, I only copy the title and not the whole thing, so I'll have to do this from memory, but as I recall, the Code Enforcement Board is appointed by the administrative authority, which is the mayor, but it's approved by the legislative body, which is council. And that's the way I read, that was the content of ten pages worth of stuff I was reading. And so my question is, I think we informally, from a council standpoint, Adam stood up and introduced himself and told us, and I think we informally approved him, but have we gone through, I don't remember, did we go through that with the other Code Enforcement Board members? That's the first question, the second, should we do that? It sounds like we should, based on this KRS here, six-five eighty-eight L one. So, I don't know if that's formal or informal, I was happy with what Adam did, I was just saying, I don't know the other people, but our responsibility, based on this KRS, is...
I don't think, I don't think we actually, we lost a member of the board, right? So it's still, yeah, I think that gentleman was...
Somebody went to, Ms. Money went to a funeral or layout, the last time they had a meeting, and she got revived. So whenever we, this thing comes together, we need, we need to do that sometime.
Yeah, and ratify it, the rest of the issue.
She was told, so asked several times to be here at that meeting, she never mentioned wanting to back here.
She might have been upset, I don't know.
And every time I called, she would return my calls, so how do you work with that?
I don't know. So that was the first question, so it sounds like that's a to-do on our list in the future. And I guess we do that formally or informally, I'm happy either way, but... The question is non-conforming properties, and we talked about this a little bit the last time, and I'm lapsing back thirty years to what we did in another city before, and I hope I'm the right answer. So here's my convoluted question. Under non-conforming properties, those would be like properties for years and years and years. Let's say it was a business, it might be in a resident, now in a residential area, and it's been non-conforming for twenty years. Let's, let's say it was a business, it might be in a resident, now in a residential area, and it's been non-conforming for twenty years. Or it could be a farm, it's been a farm for a hundred years, but now it's in a residential area where the where the zoning was changed to, well, let's pick an easy one, say residential, so it's a non-conforming property. If you're owner of one of those properties, you've gotta feel a little bit at risk. But what, what are, what, can you characterize what those risks are? Because we have some of those here in, um, here in Grand County. What's, what's their protection and what's their, uh...
Your ordinance, Jody, to answer your question, your ordinance will have in here, and I haven't looked at, non-conforming use, but there's a period of time with which a person has to vacate the use in order for it to lose its non-conforming status. And it's probably several months, it could be, six months, it could be, and I can tell you what it is. It's under section nine point one-three, it'll tell us how long it has to go before it loses your status. I always tell people that non-conforming uses are, they're valuable, they're very valuable, because they are, they are what you can do when you're not allowed to do it in the normal zoning code. So having a non-conforming use, um, for example, the A Hodge Auto Repair LLC right off North Main, I assume it's probably not in an industrial zone, maybe it is, but if that gentleman's auto repair, uh, business was in a zone that didn't permit it, he's got a very valuable piece of property because of his non-conforming use status.
Like, how long can you ratify non-conforming status?
For a, for a... It's, it passes from from one to next, as long as you don't abandon it. And a ban is 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 twelve consecutive months pertaining to your ordinance. I've seen them as low as three, because they wanna get rid of it. So a guy has a car lot in a residential zone and abandons the car lot for three months or six months, so this is one year. So you have one year, so if it's a non-conforming use and a person goes out of business or something happens, it'll take one year before that non-conforming use is is no longer grandfathered.
Okay, what about like a farm, there's a death in the family, so active farming doesn't take place till the estates fall, uh, settled and the kids take over and keep farming again, but it's thirteen months versus twelve.
Yeah, so the agriculture is a little bit different than some of the other uses that you have, so farming could be simply cutting grass for purposes of, uh, down the road of of grass harvesting. I mean, so it it's very different in context than like a gas station in a residential zone, for example. So, I mean, I think that a farm, now, if you're talking about a pig farm, you probably have a twelve-months issue, because it's a nuisance-related, non-conforming use. But you all could always amend whatever you want, that's the zoning code, it's not really part of your, um, nuisance code. It's actually part of the zoning, where it talks about how long you wanna do, people writes, and and it says not to, non-use or banning for a period of twelve consecutive months. That's...